Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Members of the Council. Today's an opportunity to honor one person and to remember and reflect upon a great Europe. Many of us remember on February 5th, 2014, the incredible surge of people on the streets of Seattle honoring the Seattle Seahawks, recognizing the success of that team. But those of us of a certain age, Councilmember Gossett and I, remember June 4th, 1979. Three hundred thousand people swarmed the streets of Seattle to recognize their team, the Seattle Supersonics. The Metropolitans may have been the first team to win a national championship back in 1917, but the team that won the hearts of this region was the Seattle Supersonics. It was a team that was not expected to do well. They changed coaches. Unfortunately, the right coach was changed, and the right coach was put in place, and that coach made some great decisions, which he can share some today. Many of us have good memories of that team because it was a team. It wasn't just an individual player. Coach Lenny Wilkins, who will be recognized later on this summer because he's completing an incredible journey that he and his wife Marilyn started, and creating the Lenny and Marilyn Wilkins Foundation to help Children's Hospital in general and Odessa Brown Clinic in particular. He's here to help recognize his friend, his colleague, his player. And I want to recognize Lenny Wilkins now, maybe to introduce the person he chose to be picked. Now, when he chose to pick Jack Sigmar, maybe Jack doesn't want that particular picture shown.
Destroy that one.
Reagan's taking that to his stylist.
But at the time, at the time, people said, "Jack who?" When he was picked. Well, it's Jack who's being put into the Hall of Fame. That's who. And he put it in the Hall of Fame because of the work he did, not as a single player, but as a team player. And he turned, and he learned so much. Back then, the Seattle Supersonics stadium, this facility, the Coliseum, was where people showed up. It was the center of our universe back then. Seattle has changed dramatically. Two days from now, we'll be celebrating the 40th anniversary of their national championship. Forty years. This city has changed dramatically, but the need to have a sports center is so critical. I'm often chastised by some constituents that I spend so much time promoting sports in our region. When you have as diversified a community as we have in this region, sports brings us together. Whether we're from Africa, Asia, Europe, wherever, sports brings us together. And no team brought us together more than the Seattle Supersonics. And no individual reflected that growth, that development, than the gentleman I'm going to introduce to introduce our very special guest today. Years ago, Governor Booth Gardner was kind enough to put me as co-chair of the Washington State Sports Game Commission. My co-chair was Lenny Wilkins. And from that period, we formed a relationship and friendship. I've been pleased to work with him as he and Marilyn and their son Randy at the time put together an incredible foundation that has brought millions of dollars to Children's Hospital. But Lenny Wilkins is one of those folks who always looks back and gives back, and he also pass on that great talent to his players. But right now, I'd like to introduce Lenny Wilkins to maybe share how he brought in this young man from Illinois Wesleyan to come all the way out here to the Wild West Coast and play, and just how he turned around this community and brought this community together. And again, sports brings us together. It does not divide us. And here's one of the great uniders, Lenny Wilkins.
Thank you very much, Pete. Certainly, what Pete said was that sports opens the doors. But you know, the past, we can always learn from the past because the past is what makes the future what brighter and gives you opportunities. For me, it was, I came to Seattle kicking and screaming also. Okay? So Jack wasn't alone. I was traded here in 1969 because I refused to sign a contract with the St. Louis Hawks. And it was mostly because of monetary reasons. And when I got here, I knew that Seattle was an expansion team and that they weren't going to make the playoffs, and I was with a team that was always in the playoffs. So that was why I was a little reticent about coming. But once I got here and I met the people in the Northwest, I knew that this would be my home. This is where I would be. And so I had many opportunities, and sports affords you that. Jack Sigmar going into the Hall of Fame, I am so proud. I can't tell you how proud I am of that team, that '79 team, and to see the accomplishments that these young men made because all of them give back to their community. And so when I was, I came here, after my first year, I was asked to be a player-coach. And the general manager of the team, I told him he was crazy, but he said, "No, I think that you could do the job, you know? I watch you. You run the team anyway." And so when he told me that, I thought about it, and then the next person I told was my wife. And I told her I was going to be a player-coach, and she said, "Well, you're either stupid or crazy, and I know you're not crazy," you know? So, but be as it may, I became a player-coach, and I loved the idea of coaching. And so, to move time forward, I was traded, and there are some couple great memories, but I'm not going to bore you with all of them. They hired a new general manager, and he said I should play or coach. And I told him they didn't pay me well enough, you know, to be a coach, so I could still play. And he said, "Fine," and they traded me to Cleveland. And I was very unhappy, and I refused to go for a while, but let me tell you, I refused to go, and then finally, the owner came out and talked me into coming to Cleveland. I went there and decided that I would keep my career going. But eventually, I came back to Seattle because I kept my home here. And the owner of the Sonics, they used to have a big charity dinner here. And I was at the dinner one night, and he followed me around all night trying to get me to sign. And I agreed that I would come back to Seattle. So I was in the front office, and they had a coach already. He kept telling me he had a coach, but I certainly could work and help him. So, in the front office, when I came back to the team, they had a trade already in the works for Fred Brown, and I said, "No, we're not making that trade. It's not a good trade for the team. We're going to keep Fred." And they also said that our draft choice was, they had scouted Jack Sigmar. And so I went to Kansas City to see Jack. Jack, that I could see, I knew we were going to take him. I mean, I was impressed. I thought that the talent was there. And the funny part was that, so I called Jack, talked to him, and I think he was in Wesleyan, you know, and his coach was Denny Rogers. Was that right?
Bridges.
Bridges, Denny Bridges. And I talked to Denny a little bit, and then I talked to Jack, and Jack said, "Well, Seattle wasn't what I had in mind." And I kind of laughed, you know? I thought that was amusing. I said, "But I'm taking you anyway." And so I decided that this was the guy we wanted, and we took Jack. He became an outstanding player for us. I didn't know at the time, but I was able to make the trades I wanted that I thought could help our team. I traded for Paul Silas and Marvin Webster. I traded Tom Brotherson for them. And I signed Gus Williams, who was a free agent. Then I told the owner, he was letting me do what I wanted. He was letting me hang myself, so to speak. But, and so when I took, when I did all those things, the coach wasn't that happy with some of the players. And I don't know why, because they were great young men, but he loved the media, the coach did, and he blasted them and the media every game they would lose. And they got off to a terrible start. They were five and 16. And I wasn't at that game, the 16th game that they lost. They were playing the Nets, which was supposed to be the worst team in the league. I was out at a restaurant opening that I had an investment in that night. So when I got home, the babysitter said, "Well, the owner called five times, and your general manager called." So finally, I got ahold of the general manager, and he said, "The owner made his mind up. They're going to fire the coach. They want you to take over." And they, and the team had flown out early the next morning to go to Denver. And they went to Denver, they played that game, and I told the owner, "I can't get to Denver. I can't get there," you know? But, and they went and they lost again, so they were five and 17. And I meet the team in Kansas City, me and the general manager. And the coach seemed relieved when we told him that we were going to relieve him of his duties and that I was going to take over. So, and I'll make this quick. When I took over, I had a meeting with the team in Kansas City before the game, and I told them that I believed in them. I thought they could make a difference, that we could change this, change it, and turn it around. And the players kind of looked at me. I think they had confidence in me, but I heard a story later on that one of the players, when I said that we can turn this around, he turned to his teammates and he said, "What's he smoking?" So, but we won that game. We got up big, and then we won it by one or two points, I think it was. And then we went to Boston, and we had two or three days off. So I had a chance to work with the team and talk with them, and I wanted to make changes. And so the changes that I made was that we, I was gonna, they were starting Paul Silas, who I had traded for, and I thought Paul should come off the bench. And I thought that Fred Brown and Slipwatch should come off the bench. And I told Fred that he could give us a dimension no team had with his ability to score. And I wanted to start Gus and Dennis. And I was gonna also start Jack Sigmar and, let's see, who else? Oh, we kept Marvin Webster in the lineup. He was the only one. And, oh, John Johnson.
Right.
John Johnson, we kept, so. So anyway, we turned the team around. We won 10 straight. I mean, it was unbelievable. And this city went crazy. I mean, it really, the fans were unbelievable. It wasn't anything like it. And I was very pleased because, you know, I felt that we were good enough. We didn't win the championship. We lost in the seventh game that year to Baltimore. And next year, we got off to a pretty good start, and then we had some injuries. And then, you know, what happens is the media starts second-guessing you again, and they didn't think, they thought it was a fluke the year before, but it wasn't a fluke. We got healthy. That's a story for another time, but we got healthy, we went on to win the championship. And let me tell you something, we wound up playing the same team in the finals. But the trip to get there was not easy. It was difficult. But we got there because our guys played together. They knew how to play. They knew how to defend. And it was things that we worked on. And when we won, we won the championship in Baltimore. We won four out of five games. And we came back the next morning, they had to route us to a separate terminal because there were 20,000 fans at the airport just to greet us coming back home. And then there was over 300,000 people at the parade, which was, it was wonderful. You know, nobody destroyed anything. I mean, it was sort of a loving. It was great, and we won that championship. And things happened. I wanted to keep that team together, but sometimes circumstances prevent salaries, bigger salaries were being offered to people and whatnot, you know? But we lost a few guys, we had some injuries, and things changed. But that team was a great team. And there's, I haven't seen anything like that, that spirit in Seattle since then. And I've been to a lot of the sports. I've been to the football games. I've been to the soccer, because my youngest daughter is a big soccer fan. And I've been to those games and everything, but nothing will replace the Sonics until we get a basketball team back here. So that's in just the story of the Sonics. There's a lot more, but when my next book comes out, you can read about it all.
We're going to introduce, with your help, tell us how you first called Jack, and then we're going to bring Jack up here, and you can share a little bit too as well.
Well, when I called Jack, you know, and to talk with him, to let him know that he was the guy we were going to draft, and he was very honest, you know, young man, and he said, "Well, Seattle wasn't what I had in mind." And I laughed, and I said, "But that Seattle is where you're coming, because we're going to take you." And so we took Jack. We didn't get him signed until the end of the summer, and that happens with negotiations. And we finally got him signed. We flew him into LA to the Summer League, where we had a team in there, a free agent team. And his first game was against Moses Malone. And Moses got like 30, you know? But Moses got 30 against all the All-Stars in the NBA. I mean, that's the way, the type of player he was. And when the owner saw that game, he couldn't believe it, and he said, "Man," he said, "Who drafted him?" You know? And the coach of the team, who was still there, he looked over at me, said, "Lenny drafted him." You know? He didn't want to take any responsibility. And I said, "Yes, I did. I said, "I think he's going to be an outstanding player." We finally got Jack signed, and he's had a wonderful career. And there's no one happier than me that he's going into the Hall of Fame. I'm sure Jack is happy, and family, and friends, and everything, but he's so deserving. And so it's with great pleasure that I bring up Jack Sigmar.
Thank you, Coach. You've had quite an impact on my life. Just tell you a little bit about it. You heard the story about my response. I have wised up a little bit since then. That was my opportunity to be young and dumb, and I definitely was. But it's not just that I have an opportunity to come to Seattle and fall in love with it. I've been here for 40-some years. But I have five siblings, and they all have followed me to Seattle. They all live here. My parents retired here, so we're like a transplanted King County, State of Washington family now, and it's just been a wonderful place. You know, the honor of being elected into the Hall of Fame really hits you in many different It's amazing, looking back, how many different people in different times of my life were so important and had an impact. And watching, seeing some of those pictures and hairdos and all that other kind of stuff bring back some good memories. I do have to mention that, I think it was around 40 years ago, that I met Peter for the first time. And as I said, I think we've smartened up since then, but it's been a wonderful friendship and kind of introduced me to the politics in the state of Washington. So, and I've always been interested since then, and again, thank you for inviting me I'm just overwhelmed by it. I just asked today, I asked Lenny to be one of my presenters at the Hall of Fame. Is there a more fitting person than Lenny Wilkins, who brought me here and started on my journey? I am 63 years old. I don't think I'll have a chance to be elected three times to the Hall of Fame like Lenny has, as a player, as a coach, and then as the coach of the '92 Dream Team. His record as a coach and a player speaks for itself, and very deserving of every award. Two days from now will be the 40th anniversary of our championship team, definitely the highlight of my career. I played 14 years, had nine great years here in Seattle, and five in Milwaukee, and enjoyed every one of them. But that team, and this weekend, it's not just winning the championship, it was, as Coach said, the return to CTAC, to the parade downtown. Fabulous memories, and again, so fortunate as a young man to be part of a great team. I'm going to have a chance to see some of my teammates back in town this weekend, and then this summer at Lenny's fundraiser. He's going to bring a lot of the guys back. So we've had a, we've had a wonderful time this summer celebrating the 40th anniversary of our championship. Again, I appreciate you inviting me here, and again, a proud King County resident and love, love what we have here in town. We're missing one thing, and of course, that's the return of Seattle Supersonics. So hopefully, in my lifetime, it happens, and we're down to the Sonics again. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, maybe if some members have some comments to share about their own experiences with basketball, then we'll go into the proclamation itself, but maybe questions or comments.
Okay, players, don't get upset here, but we're going to go first to an official in the basketball. I'm going to count them up the group. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really fun for me, and I'm thankful that you both are willing to spend your time with us. You know, there's formative moments in all of our lives, you know? We think back, you know, that one summer at camp, wherever, where you, it kind of shapes a few of things for the rest of your life. And my formative sports moments were as a young kid, watching the Sonics and watching this team. I didn't have a lot of sports memorabilia in my little bedroom at home, but I had an autographed Lenny Wilkins poster in my bedroom, growing up with you as a player. And Jack, you were my favorite player watching that team. I was young, but I do remember, and our whole family celebrated the victory that year. When I think of basketball, I think of sports, that's that formative memory for me as a young person, growing up, and I think it's probably where I developed a love of basketball. As the chair mentioned, I'm so bad at playing that I became an official instead, to be around the game and have fun refereeing high school ball and stuff like that. But I really appreciate what you brought to our region. Appreciate how much you give back. I think I've probably seen you both at various charity events, giving back, not just to youth sports, but to other causes as well, making our region a better place. So I just wanted to thank you for being here today. I think it's really cool. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rupprow. Another basketball player, Councilmember Bellview.
Hardly, high school, yeah. I cannot miss the opportunity to point out that in a sea of Cougars and Huskies, Coach Wilkins and I have something in common. We are both Friars.
Oh, right.
The Friars. What is that? Oh, my goodness, Coach. What is a Friar? Providence College, y'all.
Providence.
Providence College.
Rhode Island, yeah.
Fighting Friars.
Yeah, fighting Friars. Except I was there during the Rick Pitino, Billy Donovan era, when they made it to the Final Four. That was a pretty fun time. So I, the comments before about the value of a championship to the community, it just really binds everybody together and becomes something that makes us all sort of a family for a period of time, and that was what you all brought in. I want to thank you, for both of you, for your work in the community, not just on the court, but all the things that you do to make our region a better place. And brag a wee bit about the Bellevue High team of the late 2000s that had the Sigmar-Shremp combo. They were pretty, they were pretty great, too. So the legacy lives on here in Northwest. And congratulations, congratulations on your appointment. Well-earned.
Community, they would be making you a knight and giving you tax land for life. They're not in England. They're in King County. So we give you a proclamation. And with the permission of the chair, I'll read it when I find my reading glasses here. Whereas Jack Wayne Sigmar was born in Illinois and played collegiately at Illinois Wesleyan University in Bloomington, and was three-time All-American as well as a two-time academic All-American. And whereas Jack was a first-round pick drafted with the overall selection in the 1977 NBA Draft by the Seattle Supersonics. And whereas during his rookie season, Jack averaged 10.7 points and 8.3 rebounds and was named to the 1977-78 NBA All-Rookie Team. And whereas with the Seattle Supersonics, Jack was selected to seven consecutive All-Star Games from 1979 to 1985, averaging a double-double of 16.8 points and 10.8 rebounds, and shooting 47 percent from the field and 83 percent from the line. And whereas during his 14 years in the NBA, Jack won a world championship with the Supersonics in 1979, and became known as one of the most accurate shooting centers in NBA history. And whereas after retiring from the NBA, Jack worked in real estate development for 12 years in the Seattle area before becoming an assistant coach with the Sonics, Rockets, and Timberwolves over the next 11 years. And whereas outside of his professional life, Jack has been involved with a variety of philanthropic activities, including the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue and King County, the NBA Basketball Without Borders, the Western Golf Association Evans Scholars Foundation, and the Seattle Children's Golf Tournament fundraiser. Now therefore, we, the Metropolitan King County Council, recognize Jack Sigmar, number 43, for his induction to the Basketball Hall of Fame and for his distinguished career and service to King County. Ladies and gentlemen.
So, Mr. Sigmar, obviously, getting into the Hall of Fame is a huge honor. What does it mean for them to bring that honor home for you here to King County?
Well, it's fantastic. Number one, I cut my teeth in playing NBA basketball here in the city of Seattle. Was fortunate enough to be on one of the great teams, the championship team here. Moved here for the first time in 1977 and basically haven't left. So it's, was, basketball's had quite an impact on my life and my family here in Seattle. Again, there are so many people to thank for their support along the way, from being a youngster and, you know, my family and all of that. And to have this honor bestowed upon you by your peers is the ultimate. And I'm going to enjoy my summer and look forward to the induction in September.
Fantastic. Now, I mean, this is kind of an obvious question, but what made you pick Coach to help bring you into the Hall?
Well, it is an obvious question. Again, when you look at people that have had impact in my life, in my basketball career, who are Hall of Famers? I mean, Lenny tops the list, and he tops the list in so many different ways, too. Tremendous player, tremendous coach, one of the, I think he's number two, just barely on the most wins in the NBA. So it was pretty easy to get to that decision.
Now, I mean, getting into the Hall is a huge honor, obviously, but how does that compare to bringing that Larry O'Brien trophy home?
That was fantastic, actually, to have that happen to me on a team in my second year in the league. And again, there's no- And again, there's nothing like playoff basketball to make you be better and the challenge. And so for that to happen at the beginning of my career really launched the rest of my career. And, you know, you talk about the trophy, but it's not just a trophy. It's a trophy shared with our fans. Back then and during that time, we came out of nowhere. Lenny put a team together, huge surprise, and the city just got behind us. Those games were crazy at home and just the connection between the team and, and its fans were really special.
Well, and that brings up the next thing I was going to ask you because I know for me, it never gets old seeing that trophy at Moai. But, you know, the fans here, talk about that. I mean, because they're like no place else.
Yep. They're, like I said, it was, we were a new major sports franchise city. And the Sonics were the first. I think the Mariners, the Pilots, but then the Mariners came back. The Seahawks were close to follow. But it was, really put us on, on the map and really brought the city together. And it was all green and gold.
Well, what are we doing to get the team back here?
You know, that's, there's people at higher pay grades than I am, I have to, who can figure that out. But I know there's a will to get a team here. I believe there's the money to get a team here. I don't think a facility is going to be a problem to get a team here. It's just, you know, what right situation to come about. But Seattle has to be at the top of the list of cities where the NBA wants to get to.
Well, that's also the last thing, and I'll leave you alone. And, you know, you've mentioned the 40th anniversary that's coming up and there's some events happening. What are you looking forward to most about that part of the summer?
I mean, just seeing my teammates again. And we've had a couple of opportunities and we'll have a few more for us to get together. And what's amazing is it takes no time at all. And we're right back to how we were together and close and the convincing back and forth and, and just the stories and everything. And it, it's just wonderful. We have that bond that we went through, the, the challenge of a championship. Most of us had the bond of getting so close the year before. And that, that, that's still stands strong today.
And yeah, I'll probably pick up right where you left off every time, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks so much for that. Really appreciate it.